Buenas tardes a todos. Buenas tardes a nuestros panelistas esta mañana y a todos los que nos están siguiendo en Facebook. Mi nombre es Francesco Molinari, soy el gerente de proyectos de DesignScapes, un proyecto que ahora se está terminando. Les diré algunas palabras sobre ello. A través de este formato extraño que decidimos adoptar en lugar de una conferencia convencional de dos días, ya sea en presencia o en línea debido a la extraña situación creada después de la pandemia de COVID-19 y también el enorme número, como comentaré en breve, de presentadores potenciales de nuestra conferencia final. Decidimos adoptar este formato extraño, así que se puede decir, que lo llamamos UnConferencia. Usando como canvas no solo unos pocos días en una cierta semana, sino tres meses: julio, agosto y septiembre, durante los cuales estamos distribuyendo pequeñas sesiones online que son transmitidas en vivo en Facebook. De esta manera, tomamos beneficios de niveles adicionales de flexibilidad, tanto de nuestros participantes en los paneles como, con suerte, también del lado de aquellos que están interesados en ver nuestras sesiones en vivo. Espero que esto sea el caso para un buen número de participantes. Ahora y luego veré en nuestra página Facebook qué está pasando. Con suerte, si aparecen algunas preguntas, las recogeré y las usaré para nuestros panelistas y para animar la discusión. Hoy os voy a presentar a los miembros de este panel. Tenemos cuatro oradores distinguidos. Os los presentaré en un minuto. Antes de eso, quiero decir solo unas palabras sobre el proyecto y especialmente el tema que es el tema del equipo de hoy de esta sesión en línea. Comenzando por el proyecto DesignScapes, que ya fue fundado hace cuatro años por la Comisión Europea a través del programa Horizon 2020 para la investigación y la mejora de la innovación. El tema era la innovación impulsada por el usuario, la creación de valor a través de la design enable la innovación. Y el desafío específico abordado por nuestro llamado fue que muchas organizaciones públicas del sector público, empresas y especialmente SMEs, olvidaran el potencial de utilizar la design como fuente de mejor rendimiento. Lo que hicimos fue agregar un aspecto en particular, que llamamos la dimensión urbana, al interplay entre diseño y innovación. No puedo hacerlo largo, pero básicamente hicimos la declaración buscando evidencias de apoyo que en muchos aspectos, al integrar o emblinar en la dimensión urbana procesos innovadores permitidos por la design, habría una mejora general en la calidad y la cantidad de resultados. Y para probar esto, idejamos un mecanismo de llamada estagiado, que fue apoyado financieramente por el financiamiento de la Comisión Europea, con 1,5 millones de euros en total. Y esto se estructuró en tres etapas. La primera etapa se refería a la recolección de estudios de feasibility de la innovación de diseño enable en las ciudades. La segunda etapa fue dedicada a prototipar innovaciones en cualquier dominio posible, de productos a servicios, de políticas a sistemas de entrenamiento, y así sucesivamente. Y la tercera etapa fue dedicada a dar pruebas de concepto de que las innovaciones fueron exitosamente probadas, al menos en la versión prototipada, en la primera o segunda etapa del llamado que podría ser ampliada a ciudades adicionales alrededor de Europa. El llamado fue un gran éxito. Casi 500 propuestas fueron recibidas a través de las tres etapas. Solo uno de cinco podía financiar debido a las limitaciones presupuestarias. Pero lo que muestran las próximas mapas es que la cobertura de este llamado era realmente peneuropeo o casi así en diferentes etapas. Y por lo tanto, podemos concluir que el ingreso fue enorme, como también demostró el éxito que tuvimos en la proposición de UnConferencia durante estos meses de julio y agosto. Como mencioné, muy muchos llegaron de los pilotos que contribuimos a establecer en varios países europeos y también aceptaron participar como oradores en sesiones online pequeñas describiendo sus propias innovaciones. Y el proceso aún no ha llegado a un fin. Todavía tenemos otro mes para entregar estos resultados. Así que básicamente tenemos una situación donde, al menos en línea con nuestras expectativas y posiblemente con algunas implicaciones adicionales, que es la tarea de la conferencia de hoy para evaluar, hemos contribuido a crear una colección de varios, digamos, ítems explotables que ahora nos preguntamos si y cómo podrían ser útiles para contribuir al esfuerzo continuo del Instituto Europeo de Innovación y Tecnología para lanzar una iniciativa europea a través de un llamado para una nueva conocimiento y comunidad de innovación en el área de industrias culturales y creativas. Y esto es una especie de, digamos, una pregunta incierta o sin respuesta que nos gustaría explorar hoy. Gracias a nuestros oradores. Cuatro prominentes investigadores. Como mencioné, voy a empezar dando el palo al profesor Pier Luigi Sacco a cargo de OECD y Harvard University. Y él también tiene afiliaciones adicionales, incluyendo WHO en relación con algunos de los temas de su discurso hoy que se relacionan con innovación y diseño y cultura en general en la era de la pandemia posterior, como probablemente tengamos que familiarizarnos con saber que la vieja situación nunca volverá como era. Luego, pasaré el palo al profesor Ingrid Mulder de TDU en los Netherlandes, que centrará el foco en un aspecto especial de nuestro llamado para proyectos piloto, que solo mencioné en las diapositivas, pero ahora estoy estresando por primera vez el apoyo que le damos como consorcio a los ganadores especialmente de la segunda y tercera etapa del llamado a través de una variedad de medios, algunos de los cuales podrían convertirse en interesantes y útiles también desde la perspectiva de la nueva comunidad para ser construida por la EIT a través del llamado para propuestas. Luego, pedí a Kerstin Jung del instituto Tavistock en el Reino Unido para hacer una visión más detallada y completa de la comunidad que creemos que hemos establecido. Y esto también será apoyado por evidencias continuas de un encuesta. Ahora está finalizando con los ganadores de la tercera etapa del llamado. Porque los ganadores de la primera y segunda etapas eran la meta de encuestas anteriores a través de las cuales ya hemos recogido bastante información interesante sobre los impactos que podríamos al menos abordar con nuestro llamado y las facilidades de apoyo clarificadas y explicadas por Ingrid en su discurso. Y finalmente, para hacer como un resumen de todo lo que hemos estado escuchando, pedí al profesor David Crombie de la Universidad de Artes de Utrecht, nuevamente en los Netherlandes, para darnos saber si, en su opinión, podríamos considerarse en el camino correcto y cómo se vuelven más apoyados para cualquier dirección que el llamado de la EIT pueda tomar. Esto es todo. Me gustaría mencionar que este proyecto, como cualquier otro proyecto financiado por Europa, no es un show de un hombre, pero es el resultado de varios esfuerzos concurrentes de varios socios. No tengo tiempo de mencionarlos uno a uno, pero tenemos mucha información y añadiremos información sobre los deliverables finales de nuestro proyecto en el sitio web DesignScapes.com, nuestro sitio web oficial, y también en la página Facebook donde en este momento nuestra sesión está siendo transmitida. Esto es todo de mi parte. Terapare. Y ahora, si está feliz con eso, pasaré el palo al profesor Pier Luigi Sacco por su discurso clave. Gracias y el palo es tuyo.
Gracias Francesco. Es un placer hablar en el contexto de la final reunión de un proyecto como DesignScapes porque lo que me gustaría hablar acerca es exactamente cómo, y especialmente ahora en el escenario postpandémico, estamos enfrentando desafíos pero también emocionantes condiciones para nuevas formas de creación colectiva. Creo que este es un tema muy trendy en este momento. Hablando de la co-creación se ha convertido en una especie de línea de argumento mainstream, pero creo que es más fácil decir que se hace, como sabemos. Es muy desafiante y al mismo tiempo creo que también es muy importante reconstruir cuáles son las condiciones que han llevado a que hoy consideremos la co-creación como una posibilidad emocionante, pero también el hecho de que la noción de la co-creación está profundamente arraigada en nuestra historia cultural. Y por lo tanto, es importante entender cómo los desafíos que enfrentamos hoy resonan con la larga historia, la larga historia cultural de la humanidad desde el punto de vista de cómo la co-creación ha sido en cierto sentido plantada en nuestro propio, digamos, contexto biocultural y qué podemos hacer hoy para enfrentar los nuevos desafíos que tenemos que superar, por supuesto, especialmente en el contexto del escenario postpandémico. Así que es importante entender que en las formas más antiguas de la creación cultural, aquellas de las sociedades pre-writas, la co-creación es básicamente el modo natural. Así que para la mayor parte de la historia cultural humana, la idea de que hay un autorship, que hay alguien que en cierto sentido controla o tiene el monopolio de la creación de sentido en cualquier tipo de actividad simplemente no se contemplaba. En cierto sentido, este es el producto secundario de la emergencia del escribir como tecnología social. Es interesante entender cuándo esto sucede. Quiero decir, por supuesto, tengo que hacer una historia muy larga corta, pero es importante enfocarnos en esto, especialmente en la historia cultural occidental. El momento en el que vimos la emergencia de la co-creación, perdón, vimos la emergencia del autorship que en cierto sentido es, digamos, el modelo alternativo de la co-creación, o al menos que ha sido inicialmente, tendremos que ver que hoy, por supuesto, esto ya no es un dilema. Pero el momento en el que esta contraposición realmente emerge tiene que ver con el comienzo de la era clásica griega alrededor del siglo VI antes de Cristo. Y la razón tiene que ver con la co-evolución entre una nueva forma de producción circulativa y la democracia. Así que es interesante que en el momento en el que en la antigua clase de Grecia la democracia emerge en una situación en la que tienes ambos al mismo tiempo la necesidad de dar importancia al individuo porque, por supuesto, en el modelo democrático tienes derecho a tus propias opiniones y, por supuesto, el intercambio de opiniones, el debate alrededor de las opiniones individuales es crucial desde el punto de vista de establecer un consenso y tomar decisiones en un entorno democrático. Y al mismo tiempo tienes la necesidad de trabajar en escenarios contradictorios muy complejos porque cuando tienes una toma de decisiones democrática donde tienes que deliberar sobre leyes, por supuesto, tienes que considerar si un cierto principio aplicaría en cualquier de los muchos mundos posibles. Esta combinación de razonamiento contradictorio y las opiniones individuales y el intercambio de opiniones individuales ha estado reflejando en una evolución muy rápida, digamos, de lo que eran las tradicionales formas rituales de producción cultural como las que han sido típicas de la creación colectiva, como por ejemplo poesías épicas que, como sabemos, incluso si son hoy bajo el nombre de un autor único, digamos Homer o quienquiera, han sido principalmente, por supuesto, el resultado de un proceso muy complejo de creación colectiva y en un espacio de algunas generaciones simplemente te mueves a nuevas formas de producción cultural como, por ejemplo, el teatro clásico griego, que se escribe de principio a fin y atribuido a un autor único. Este proceso ha sido extremadamente importante especialmente por una razón. Las tradicionales formas de co-creación de las sociedades pre-writas son formas que son tendencia muy conservadoras. La evolución del contenido es muy lenta porque en las formas ritualísticas de la producción cultural en cierto sentido, cualquier innovación desde el punto de vista del contenido es desafiante y especialmente es desafiante el orden existente. Así que es muy difícil para cualquier individuo individual desaparecer sustancialmente de lo que es, digamos, el thread común de narración y imaginación que tiene que ver con esta forma de creación colectiva. Qué pasa con la creación del nuevo régimen de producción cultural que está asociado al periodo clásico griego que es en cierto sentido el comienzo del régimen patronageo europeo es la idea de asignar a individuos únicos el monopolio para la creación de sentido en áreas específicas sin ser buscados por el tipo de innovación que introducen. Así que imagina qué pasa en el teatro clásico griego cuando empiezas a trabajar en escenarios contradictorios como qué pasa si mato a mi padre y duermo con mi madre. Qué pasa si una madre mata a sus hijos. Este tipo de situación, que es extremadamente importante, digamos, definir una nueva arena cognitiva en la que al mismo tiempo viste la evolución de las instituciones de la democracia y de nuevas formas radicales de innovación cultural ha sido fundamental para la noción de la producción cultural como la conocemos hoy, pero al mismo tiempo cambia dramáticamente la importancia de las formas colectivas de creación a la importancia del autor, de la originalidad y la capacidad del autor para desafiar existentes, digamos, "escapismos" de significado, así que se puede decir, si queremos usar una paralela con el título de este proyecto. Así que vamos a saltar un par de milenios. Lo que estamos viendo hoy es una situación completamente diferente porque esta larga historia, esta larga evolución del autorship y la creación y la producción culturales que nos ha pasado, digamos, el periodo entre la era clásica griega hasta hoy, ha sido un periodo en el que hemos construido más y más formas complejas de autorship que principalmente han sido individuales. Pero la verdaderamente interesante implicación del régimen de producción cultural que estamos desarrollando hoy es que, como en un pendulum, estamos en cierto sentido volviendo a formas de creación circulativa que son colectivas. Así que, ¿cómo ha sido posible esto? Esta es básicamente la consecuencia de la revolución countercultural después de la Segunda Guerra Mundial. Estamos viendo en cierto sentido una transición crítica a una sociedad post-caricida en la que por primera vez en la historia humana la gente se comporta como si la perspectiva de la hambre, de morir de hambre ya no es una posibilidad concreta. ¿Cuál es la consecuencia de esta situación particular que es imperecedoria en la historia humana? Es que instintivamente los humanos ahora, los humanos sienten la libertad en cierto sentido de experimentar con nuevas nociones de la construcción de identidad que en sociedades en las que la escasez está dramáticamente dependiendo de, digamos, el menú de las elecciones colectivas es más o menos prohibido. Así que, quiero decir, lo que es interesante es que en este nuevo turno que estamos experimentando hoy por primera vez realmente vimos una situación en la que los individuos sienten derecho a explorar su identidad social y cultural básicamente sin restricciones. Esta es una situación que es imperecedoria. ¿Cuál es la consecuencia de esto? Quiero decir, en el primer momento histórico en el que esto materializó, así, la revolución countercultural desde el final de los 50, esto ha llevado a la floración de las culturas contradictorias y las subculturas en particular. Así que las subculturas son burbujas culturales en las que los individuos definen colectivamente en un grupo pequeño las reglas del juego desde allí la construcción de identidad y la creación de significado. El juego y la arena. La consecuencia de esto es que por primera vez en una larga extensión hay este interés creciente de la gente para contribuir a una narración colectiva y no simplemente ser, digamos, espectadores de algo que ha sido producido por una pequeña élite de productores culturales. En cierto sentido, la revolución digital que estamos experimentando hoy es la traducción tecnológica de un cambio social que ocurrió mucho antes de la verdadera revolución digital como la conocemos hoy. Pero el punto es que en esta nueva situación, el mayor resultado de la revolución digital que estamos experimentando hoy está permitiendo nuevas formas de creación colectiva de nuevo. Y esto es en cierto sentido interesante. Es el tipo de escenario que DesignScapes mismo está tratando de explorar. Así que, por supuesto, estamos en una situación en la que estamos, digamos, de vuelta a muy largos plazos, condiciones históricas famosas de formas de, digamos, producción cultural oral, no incidentemente hoy muchas personas hablan de nueva neorralidad en tratando de hacer sentido estas nuevas formas de creación digital, pero al mismo tiempo esta es una forma de oralidad que es muy fuertemente mediada por el escribir y esto lo hace tan diferente de las viejas formas de oralidad. Al mismo tiempo, sin embargo, estamos enfrentando una nueva situación en la que esta forma colectiva de creación como posible por las plataformas digitales es, por supuesto, una nueva oportunidad muy importante de explorar. El gran desafío y la gran contradicción es este. Los jugadores que están empoderando estas nuevas formas de creación colectiva a través de plataformas digitales, así que básicamente los grandes gigantes digitales globales de Silicon Valley no realmente consideran las consecuencias más importantes y radicales de esta nueva plataforma. Así que la creación colectiva de verdad tiene algo interesante en el ámbito empresarial porque desde el punto de vista del negocio, el modelo que los grandes gigantes de Silicon Valley todavía tienen es un modelo de una especie de evolucionada de la industria cultural y creativa que todavía está basada en propiedad intelectual en términos del modelo empresarial implícito. Así que lo realmente interesante es que estamos enfrentando una contradicción. Las personas que básicamente están creando las condiciones para que esto suceda no realmente están dispuestas a apoyar a la consecuencia completa de lo que es el mayor resultado de esta nueva tecnología. ¿Es esto una novedad? No en absoluto. Es exactamente lo que pasó en Europa cuando, al principio del siglo XX, Europa creó la mayoría de la tecnología que permitió el nacimiento de la industria creativa cultural. Pero al mismo tiempo no realmente estaban dispuestos a saltar en la nueva bandera porque esto era en cierto sentido jeopardizaría todas las posibilidades del régimen patronageo principal en el que distinguías entre cultura alta y cultura baja y la idea de que en cierto sentido la cultura masiva y el tejido, por supuesto, de la gente pobre conducirían la lógica de la cultura de producción sería un no-go para la inteligencia europea al principio del siglo XX. Así que de nuevo estamos en la misma situación. Tienes una creación masiva de tecnología que permite nuevas formas de producción y los agentes reales que hacen posible esto no realmente están dispuestos a apoyarlo a la conclusión completa porque están demasiado profundamente vinculados a los regímenes anteriores. Así que en esta nueva situación, sin embargo, hay esta increíble posibilidad de innovación de fondo que no viene de, digamos, los grandes gigantes de la tecnología, sino que viene de los margen, viene de las pequeñas comunidades, viene, por ejemplo, del Sur Global y del Paco Oriente. Así que es interesante que haya nuevos jugadores geográficos, los que realmente en cierto sentido están explorando las posibilidades. Los modelos empresariales más interesantes postcooperativos, por ejemplo, para esta nueva tecnología digital vienen del Paco Oriente, especialmente Corea del Sur. Los experimentos de fondo de fondo en este sentido vienen de África, por ejemplo, o América del Sur. Así que es realmente interesante ver qué tipo de nueva geografía de producción esta creando, cómo esto en cierto sentido cruza los pasos con lo que está pasando ahora con el nuevo escenario postpandémico. Así que estamos en una situación extremadamente compleja y rica. Tenemos hoy una tecnología que permite la creación colectiva y una aceleración de la dimensión digital que ha sido posible no solo pero necesaria por el escenario postpandémico. Así que, ¿todo es fácil, solo un trozo de pastel, simplemente avanzamos en esta dirección? No en absoluto. Tenemos algunas dilemas a considerar. Hay algunos aspectos importantes del escenario digital que deben ser seriamente tomados si realmente queremos permitir las posibilidades para la creación colectiva ser sostenible desde el punto de vista social a largo plazo. El problema más importante es el programa social de los humanos en términos de la dimensión física de la interacción y el intercambio. La mayoría de nuestras interacciones sociales son significativas porque están diseñadas para ser fisicamente mediadas. Tienen que ver con el contacto visual, tienen que ver con el toque físico. Y sabemos que el hecho de que no solo los grupos se construyen alrededor de este tipo de interacción, sino que la confianza se construye alrededor de este tipo de interacción y incluso la posibilidad de buena cognición colectiva tiene que ver con compartir el mismo espacio es algo que es muy desafiante para nosotros hoy. Quiero decir, hemos sido diseñados de esta manera porque este ha sido nuestro entorno básicamente desde que los humanos aparecieron en la Tierra. Así que el hecho de crear nuevas posibilidades en las que el contacto físico o compartir el mismo espacio físico ya no es la opción predeterminada es un gran desafío. Así que tenemos increíbles nuevas oportunidades desde el punto de vista de herramientas para crear nuevas digitales, compartidas y empoderadas de significado juntas, pero al mismo tiempo el entorno social en el que estamos es profundamente innatural para nosotros todavía hoy. El segundo punto es, por supuesto, que esto amplifica las inigualidades existentes porque las personas que son más capaces de participar efectivamente en un entorno digital son las más endostadas en términos de conectividad digital, en términos de educación, en términos de ingresos, y así sucesivamente. Cuanto más marginalizada la comunidad, más difícil es realmente participar en estos procesos en los que ni siquiera compartes el mismo entorno espacial. Y, por supuesto, como ya hemos dicho, la bondad de grupo es muy difícil crear realos grupos que sientan la bondad juntas en este tipo de situación si no hay interacción física. Así que estamos, digamos, enfrentando algunos muy interesantes nuevos escenarios, pero los desafíos a ser superados son realmente sustanciales. Por otro lado, claramente estas nuevas plataformas digitales nos ofrecen primero nuevas formas de distribución de inteligencia colectiva porque, por supuesto, hay un enorme... there is a huge opportunity from sharing the same physical space, but also limitations. Because of course, you have to be there, everybody, at the same time. These new forms of distributed collective intelligence can really unleash new forms of cultural diversity and variety that are not possible in traditional physical interaction. At the same time, of course, this also creates new spaces for geographically marginal players, people who live in remote areas in which physical interaction becomes more difficult. And of course, flexibility. Because in this particular case, you also have the possibility to unleash the collaboration of people living in different time zones or in different social conditions that can contribute, for example, asynchronously in different situations that would not be feasible in physical space. So we clearly have some pros and cons. But at the same time, it's extremely important that, as Francesco said, the disruption created by the pandemic crisis is permanent in many regards. I think that some of the aspects that we are developing today in terms of digital connectivity are not coming back, even if will not be erased, even if the pandemic crisis is hopefully overcome completely, which is, however, today, still very, very controversial. So it's important to understand how to make, how to create a compatibility between the new enabling conditions for collective creation facilitated by the digital platforms with the biosocial cognitive challenges that are created by this completely different kind of environment. It's important to understand, at the same time, that we have to create a new, let's say, flexible organization of modes of cultural production in which collective ownership becomes again a strong possibility, but of course, individual ownership is not a thing of the past. It's something that still remains highly relevant. So how can we, let's embed these new forms of cultural production in the already existing scenario of regimes of cultural production, so that these two forms seamlessly communicate, toggle between one possibility to the other, which is something that spontaneously people are already doing. Okay, so I think that my time is up. And I'm sorry that I had to stack up so many different topics and contents in such a limited time and mostly jumping all logical connections. So probably this would sound incoherent, but at the same time, I can tell you that with some more time, the dots can be, that can be linked in a much more consistent way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pier Luigi. It was very inspiring. I cannot see any question on Facebook yet, but I have my own one. I don't want to open another thread, but I have it on the top of my tongue, I will make it right away. One major difference from the original scenario, let's say, of ancient Greece you started from, and the current European scenario, is that Europe is united in diversity. There are diversities of languages, which means diversity of cultures. There is an opposite trend of making English the lingua franca. We are now speaking in English in this session. How do you see the, this particular angle of the new situation? How can the English as the lingua franca contribute to removing the useless differences or prevent local places and local communities from preserving and maybe valorizing their own respective cultural heritage legacies?
Thank you, Francesco. This is a very stimulating question. I have to say that the kind of cultural space that we are building in Europe today resembles that of ancient Greece more than it seems. Because, for example, at the basis of this very complex socio-political environment that was the root of Greek democracy, the city-states, there was this idea that, for example, delegations of people coming from every city-state would regularly visit the other ones and come back and report on what they saw, the so-called theoretical troubles. Theory, I mean, has been linked to cultural diversity in the Greek cultural space from the very beginning of the notion itself. So the idea that, in some sense, you are fertilized by cultural diversity is something that, again, we have inherited from that period in a much more profound way than we can imagine. And the very idea of Greek theatre is the result of Greek processions that were generally welcoming visitors from other cities to the city, ritually being brought to the center of the common public space as non- enemies but hosts. And the symbolic procession was basically the way to symbolize this form of cultural exchange. Theatre was basically the result of the formalization of the end stage of the procession. So it's interesting that there has been a very, very long process of elaboration from the spine of you. But coming to the core of your question, language. So it's extremely important to understand that the language that we speak is not simply a practical way to communicate. We reason in a different way depending on the language we speak, even when we are multilingual. We don't reason the same way, for example, when we speak in our mother tongue or in another language. I can know English very well, I can use it, I can even think in English and dream in English. But if this is not my mother tongue, it doesn't mean that I will use it and I will basically evoke the same affective and cognitive processes that I would by using my mother tongue. So what is the consequence of this? That this lingua franca is very practical, but also at the same time, this lingua franca is changing profoundly the way in which we, in some sense, use our cognitive and emotional resources in communication. So it's extremely important to preserve both. Practicality, of course, asks for a lingua franca. But the fact that Europe has this astonishing diversity, linguistic diversity, is not a liability. It's an asset. And we have to learn how to use it in such a way that it basically harnesses the collective ingenuity rather than, let's say, blocks or creates contrapositions between different local identities. But that's the challenge that we have. And we are fortunate to have it. The US do not have this kind of challenge, China itself does not have it. So it's very important to understand that this, that could look like a problem, in some sense, is one of the most interesting opportunities that, as Europe, we have to develop a new model based on cultural diversity, which is integral, which is substantial, but also at the same time, it's really a form of, let's say, is an asset, not simply in creative terms, but in social cognitive terms that can make Europe distinguishly, distinguishly unique today in the global panorama of creativity.
Thank you, Pier Luigi. Your answer was very convincing on the one hand, but also raising additional questions we don't have the time to make now. So I thank you very much on behalf of the DesignScapes project. I don't know if you have the time to stay with us until the end in one hour.
I'll try.
You will try, otherwise, no worries. Thanks for being here, and there will certainly be other opportunities shortly. Now, I would like to pass the floor to Professor Ingrid Mulder from TU Delft. I think she will already be in the favorable situation of connecting some of the dots that you, Pier Luigi, created in your speech, especially talking about this European-wide capacity-building effort, which we, as the DesignSCAPE consortium, have developed and carried out in support of the 99 winners of the three stages of our call, especially those engaged in prototyping and demonstrating the scalability potential of their innovations. Ingrid, please, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Francesco, and also thank you, Pier Luigi, for bringing the complicated context around this topic. Because then I don't need to repeat that. So as already said, in DesignScapes, we were experimenting with like a two-folded support mechanism to further diffuse this use of design and innovation in urban context. And as kind of summarizing, this design is not like straightforward design doing, it's way more complicated. So it's an interplay of design and innovation in an urban context. So the process is more complex, nonlinear and multi-level, so there are multiple stakeholders involved. But also the urban context itself is involved. And the impact of design has an impact on this urban context. It basically means we need to include the city in this design process, but also the urban context needs to learn and adapt to embrace societal change. Because we're talking about societal change and not classical product innovation. So this also sounds still straightforward. But how can we support this collective learning ability? Or how can we create this learning community that is necessary to bring forward this systemic change? So this is what I tried to unravel, what we did in the project, and also will demonstrate how we did. In this way, we basically had also two goals. On one way, we want to learn from the 99 pilots. Like, when do I, what kind of design capabilities did they use to make them outstanding? And also understand how can we better support them, how can we train them to do even better by moving away from like the traditional tool and method prescription approach? Because we try to improve, we don't know really yet, give guidelines how to do that. And by having this also multi-layered design approach, we developed an infrastructure for a community of practice that is aimed to learn in a self-sustained way beyond the DesignScapes program. So, to briefly summarize, we have like three different design actions in the program. So on top is clearly the selected pilots that are developing their own solutions. And we had the feasibility studies, the prototypes, and those pilots that aim to scale from one context to another context. So this is maybe the most literal design activity in the program done by the pilots. On top of that, or parallel to that, we developed our capacity-building program, that basically also consists of the technical support, so the funding that enables them to do this, have the opportunity to focus on design. Also, through the open calls, our digital platform, but also the guided questioners. By just asking them to promote how they could use design. We already scheduled them in thinking on how to do that. But next to that, we developed this capabilities framework to understand what capabilities do these pilots have. We provide a toolbox with ready-to-use tools and put them also in a scaffold for them to better understand when to use that. But in an additional, we also developed and co-developed with them training modules to make them perform even better. And by co-defining these and co-designing these training modules, we involved the current pilots, which interestingly happened to become a community of practice, of practitioners, that can be seen as a role model in demonstrating design-enabled innovation throughout Europe. So what did we learn from these pilots in what kind of capabilities they have? So what we see is they all have a certain set of, yeah, human-centered design mindsets, what is super straightforward, that's all there. But beyond maybe the classical design practices and also they're trained for, we saw that when you really want to prototype design innovation in cities and even when you want to scale it through other contexts, some aspects become way more challenging and are also kind of scaling and becoming more advanced. So this is on the level of working together. So you need to involve a huge variety of stakeholders and be part of the process. Also, the ambition of understanding complexity, the strategic leadership, who is leading, and also empowering others to lead in this change process. And the viability of urban innovation is way more complicated. So throughout the project, we developed also this educational approach for collaborative learning. And in this, we also used, like, practice what we preach, use co-creation and inclusiveness as center of our, of our learning approach. And in this way, the capacity-building program is not only an end, but it is also the means to learn, it provides the space for the selective initiative to reflect and in that sense, better understand what sometimes maybe implicitly we're doing. And to contextualize their training topics in their own projects, but also see the difference through discussing with others. So our aim was to co-develop with these role models new knowledge on these challenges and strategies and the capabilities that are necessary for all other examples, or other pilots that are willing to promote change in urban context. And so to say how we were doing, you can also see, we had this collaborative learning and we had community building, where they basically go hand in hand. And we just also designed several touchpoints to promote this learning approach. So first of all, being selected in a funding program like DesignScapes means you're a kind of group, but it doesn't make them a community. And so we started with an onboarding session to have the first moment to let them learn from each other. We also had a community on Facebook where they already also engaged in each other's project and posed questions, we sent newsletters, had also community coffee breaks to kind of just talk on things that happened. And we showcased their profiles, which was interestingly helping them to to promote what they were doing. But on top of that, the most important was to use workshops, online workshops in a dialogic way with them to support and scaffold their articulation and reflection and developed a series of training modules. So for example, the key element is how can you use reflection to your future steps? We developed a series of confaces and involved them in these, and that's, for example, resulted by them stressing the importance and the learning needs in engaging with the community and to build trust. We developed another training model, for example, focusing on communicating with and engaging with stakeholders. So I'd like to show a little example of how it works, because it might be more speaking, so I will show a short video for a couple of minutes.
We're going to start with basically just thinking, when have you engaged or communicated with stakeholders in your project? So when you had, having general, any type of experiences with this?
I was having in mind this project that we did about sustainable mobility. The first stakeholder that we wanted to bring on the project was the municipal. Basically, there were political clashes, and that at some point made us having like some closed door from other potential stakeholders.
I have two experiences, that's for me, very interesting. One is in Chile, but there was stakeholder that has One is in Chile, but there was stakeholder that has completely different ideas. The main problem was explain to the people what was the project about.
Many times that I found really interesting. The first one, how you are the leader of the conversation in order to avoid any type of manipulation of the information that are coming. So that I think is really important and that's why I put it as a highlight. The other, it's a bit the same stigma that we will have in Sicily when we are talking about entrepreneurship by giving them a different storytelling. Maybe that's the way in which they will get on board a bit easier. So thank you for sharing because I could make some connections that are really useful.
To wrap it up, maybe I would ask you, what are the lessons for your next step?
On my side, I really think that design, when it goes hand in hand with other disciplines, in this case anthropology, because that's what I was discovering today, can actually take out the best of it because it's not just about experimentation, it's also about research. I would say that my takeaway for today would actually to include in a project that previously I was thinking that would involve only the private sector, also the field of research, university, people that are working on these issues from a different perspective, that maybe immediately I wouldn't see the connection, but by exploring bit by bit can actually add value to the project.
The main thing is that we need this kind of workshop because we need to exchange ideas, point of view, way to work. All the time I could speak with people from other places. That could be Sicily, like Norway, come out very, very interesting things to understand, to explore.
So through this approach, yeah, we developed these training modules which are ready to use, can be repeated. But as what we also heard in this video, it's really the dialogue on using these modules that makes it applicable and helps practitioners to work on these. And so throughout the project, we already had under twenty-seven active members forming the online community. And yes, so being the community is basically provides you in the opportunity to learn and do better. And so what we clearly learned was also that this knowledge sharing happens through collaboration. And what's even maybe more interesting was that one of the training modules has been co-developed together with one of the pilots and with Tavistock and Toots, so with Kirsten and two Delfts. And I hope Kirsten will also maybe refer to this. And this is very nice and also promising that if you foster community building in a good way, we can go pretty further with the impact of design in this context. So what will happen beyond these initiatives? Because in the beginning I said we had like three target groups. So of course we started with the pilots and see them as role models. But next to this, these pilots, these initiatives, there are also the policymakers that need to take a role in bringing this design in urban context further. And so we also experimented with several policymakers, governmental institutes. I will give the example of ANSI. And also looked for how can design students act as future innovators? And how can we already train them on these future skills? So in this way, we basically created a pool of facilitators who are able to locally support and scale up these design-enabled innovation activities and implement also the policy to further promote the use of design in cities. And so also last week, I was there as a DesignScape conference session. So you can watch that back on Facebook, where we developed in close collaboration with the policymakers at ANSI Tokana to see how they can use also reflection on values in their daily practice. And so over the course of half a year, we worked with them in these activities. And in the end, they have a set of tools that they can use in their daily practices. So to wrap up the presentation is that's what we have learned through DesignScape. That it's really important to have such a learning infrastructure to activate a community of learners, which is open to use and share their knowledge and also learn better what their design capabilities are and how can they bring innovation across Europe or maybe across the world. What was interesting to learn is that engagement and participation are really key elements to have projects to learn. So in that way, a tool is nice, a method is nice, but being with these peers to co-reflect really helps them to appropriate how to do these in the urban context. Because the context needs to be taken into account and really demands for different challenges for each pilot. So what works in one context is not necessarily the best way for that. So in that sense, you really need to have this additional design elements needs to be developed every time. And what's more interesting and related to the previous part is that those that are more active happen to learn more and become way more fluent and more, well, design-enabled innovation literate, which makes it like a new paradox or maybe divide. And so if you really want to have a whole region, a whole nation included in being able to be part of this transformative change, you need to be aware that how can we just include new innovators and new innovations in this approach? Thanks. This was the most what I was willing to share and I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Hey, questions?
Thank you, Ingrid. I was monitoring on Facebook, unfortunately, the quality of the internet was not excellent. So when you started the video, after the first few frames, the video stopped. But fortunately, we could hear the voices, so we didn't miss too much. But I want to apologize with the people who sent us comments on the Facebook chat box because of that. Apart from that, I cannot see any questions. So I will make my own one. I think you highlighted on the one hand, the complexity, but also the meaning and the purpose of this infrastructuring endeavor. What I would like to hear from you is a bit of an evaluation of our interim achievements, thinking of a possible replica of this approach in the context of the next opportunities that can materialize shortly, including the kick on culture and creativity. What are your impressions about the outreach, the transformative impacts? How dependent were the people who promoted our pilot projects from their prior previous knowledge or the knowledge you and your team and our colleagues from other partners in this project injected in them from a methodological point of view, in terms of use of the tools? What is your overall comment and evaluation of this experience?
Yeah, so like first of all, so we selected good pilots. So they were not, they knew design tools, they were already experts. This is why they were top-ranked. And so in that sense, we were not training them design. So we really trained them the advanced design skills, what is necessary when you're designing for societal change and when you need to take into account, for example, these different stakeholders and how to do that. And here it comes, what is pretty important is the peer sharing, to kind of facilitate the debates and learn together. And because oftentimes these are, well, maybe kind of implicit actions, but people do. But when you just share with peers and foster this dialogue, you become more aware of it. And these, well, one-on-one collaboration or like small groups of collaboration, when you're talking physical solutions, we saw also that in our projects, the pilots that have a physical solution in their urban innovation could foster this dialogue around this physical solution. But then again, they all do multiple design actions. So it's not only the product or the product service, it's also this local network, what they had to design on top and basically also the local chains. So having said, it's like my first image, it's really the the design at hands, but also design the local network, infrastructure. And what is really a key asset from the design project is that we have this training infrastructure to share what is oftentimes implicit. And by keeping this open and inviting more people to join, I see this a very promising way to go if we really want to scale across Europe. Because honestly, we just scaled from one city to another city. So it doesn't mean that everything in between is part of it.
Thank you, Ingrid. I really think these words will be inspiring for ourselves first and also I look forward to hearing David Crombie's opinion on what he just listened to. He will have time to do this in the conclusions. So now I will pass the floor over to Kerstin Junge from Tavistock Institute. She and her organization were in charge of monitoring the progress and the early signs of impact of our project in the community we were just talking about before and we would like to create. So she will present the state of play, what we consider as the acquisition or the legacy of our project. But again, we're an eye on looking for ways to make these opportunities, these communities surviving in the long term, which is a challenge per se, but hopefully we will not be left alone in this challenge. So Kerstin, the floor is yours. Take your time because we are perfectly on time at the moment. So relax. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesco. Hopefully, and thanks for the handover of the power to share screen as well. It seems to have worked perfectly. Yes, so I'm here to talk about the community building networking effects that we've been able to measure, I guess, from the DesignScape program. And so my interpretation, so let me first tell a little bit more about the scope of our work and let me put this into the presentation.
Can you go full screen?
Yeah.
Can you go full screen? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'll just relax. So thank you, Francesco. Let me first give you a little bit of context to our role in DesignScape and the focus of the evaluation. So Francesco said our role was to follow the process of project implementation as well as measure qualitative and quantitative as possible. The early stage outcomes and systems travel woods impact. Impact of DesignScape program. And we did this by particularly looking at four questions, which are closely linked to the DesignScape aims overall. And they are the role DesignScape in supporting inclusiveness and producing equality of citizens' access generation. Here can switch the topic to co-creation and in results, eccentric creation, that is successful in relation. The impact, or the contribution, design, performance, efficiency, commercial, public sector, and then the additional contribution of the urban context. When Francesco asked about community focusing and community building effects, I think really my thoughts led to the first two set of questions. And in particular, sharing with you some impressions. The kind of the evaluation cover, which is in the middle of analyzing and bringing together all of the data. It's kind of high level figures really from the free ones of surveys that we implemented as part of our evaluation role. Where at each of the different states of DesignScape, we asked about successful and unsuccessful projects, a set of questions relating to these, related to the high level and evaluation questions. And what here in particular is some of the answers we received and questions of collaboration, the effects of design, support in collaboration of other projects with various factors. So this is relevant and repetitive and twelve longer. I think it's worth reminding ourselves about the nature of the scale of the pilots. We found that it's part of the DesignScape, the finding of what's happening in pre-bounds. So we've got a ton of nineteen-nine funded pilots, fifty who have implemented the build. So this, but in one, over hundred implemented prototyping activities. Ten most recent grounds to explore the scaling potential, actually scale. There are interventions, they were nicely spread. And the chart below shows sort of the geographic, what is the geographic distribution of the pilots between north, east, east and west. Okay, so when I thought about what I can share about DesignScape communities and the difference made or we've been able to observe, I thought it's probably talk about kind of three stages in pilot development. So I think it's useful to talk to, 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 to show about how the pilots are created. Because of course, DesignScape calls emphasis on mobile range practice. So there is a very strong intervention from the funding instrument was designed or is a good degree of network and building links. um, the network and, and building links. And I think it's interesting to look at what happened during pilot implementation and then what was the, or the signals about, some of the results. I'm not often thinking this was to look at, to look at, look at this, um, look at the community for the questions. From this, this Design Scape's, or program level, um, and look at it, um, for individual pilots. If you're looking at the community building effect about, um, in late design Scape's, then first look at, um, look at it with more pilots, were, were developed and when, when a project applied, uh, the quick search, free options, the quick, um, they, in application, choose to say that the pilot have been developed by active participation, this is an extra sign. And they were like, well, it's a creative input, that's the green button, the chart. And then, yeah, like exclusively by highlighters, especially by experts. And what's interesting about this chart, um, in terms of, I guess, for the networking, community, during effects, it's obviously on the one hand, kind of the fact that the vast majority of pilots work in a different creative inputs. So we can already see that kind of in responding to the core people wrote together, so the fingertips expertise in order to think about how they would build from structure pilots. What's also interesting is kind of the little blue charts, little blue bar. Um, and the left-hand side, which is the extent which citizens and non-expert designers were involved. And here we see another part, and then it was like this, because it's very few. The, uh, it is interesting that, of course, the progress, the different stages of the course, actually the role of citizens, um, and non-expert designers in project formulation seem to grow. So more comparatively more, um, in, uh, for the, for the, uh, scale pilots than, for instance, for their feasibility. So, um, so yes, I think that the story here for me is that the invitation to the field to link up quite widely, um, in the communities at urban level, in order to design those pilots. Um, clearly had a result in, in, in how, how the pilots were, were, were constructed and kind of the practice that were involved in question. Um, so this is moving, so this is kind of the initial stage. So this is, I think, we just have some of the figures that we asked people to tell us in our survey. But actually, how many, and this is reporting on ones two, one, one, two and three only, and those responded to our survey. So, um, what, what we, this report, actually on the scale of, um, different types of actors that pilots involved in, um, in their work. Um, showing that, you know, good, good, good number of citizens were involved, um, followed by not for profits. Um, it's, it's, it must dominate, kind of organization, um, then public administrations and uh, 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 can't lose, um, uh, for profits, for profit and to find this. Let's just how it looks like, uh, also that one. This is a scale of community building, network, and that happen by, by pilots, um, in, um, in the urban context. What is interesting, particularly in the context of Design Scape's, Design Scape's one of the key missions. I think the Design Scape's, to continue to, um, enhancing the use of the take off, this is a, of Design Thinking tools. Um, man's organizations and geographically, and so we are pilots. Um, how many of these, uh, the people that are born new to Design Thinking, um, and here we can, can see that this number of not for profits, public administration, and then for profit, um, organizations. That were involved in, in Design Scape's, were actually new to Design Thinking. And there was, and we have said, we must have our quality, and there was, there was knowledge transfer mechanism, mechanism that happened as part of implementing, um, the project. So, uh, so kind of, so such training, with one case study, where there was sort of training and process going on, um, with, uh, with, uh, with the private enterprise or Design Thinking, which was subsequently taken up, uh, for instance. So, uh, so that was sort of, so it was sort of a numerical extension, I guess, and that kind of link here was different actors. But there was a sort of, I guess, kind of qualitative aspect to the community building, um, and this was network building. Um, that happened as part of implementing the project. More on the point of this qualitative relationship between, uh, so we, so we, so we, in those communities, I guess, that were, that were, that the design gets pilots. There was, that was, that was that was, that emerged, um, through the qualitative case study work, where the, the, the way a pilot was created to be that for strong user involvement, building on using professional experiences and building on existing products or just purely research had, um, had an effect about ownership, like of the innovation by, by the users. Um, so that goes against, yeah, the kind of what's the quality of the, of the, of the network in the communities that, um, that, that emerged as a result of the pilots. Um, so where we had sort of a very strong grounding of the pilots in what we would call the lift experience of users, so, um, or in fact, the users taking them one of the key, uh, project promoters. We did also a strong ownership of, of problems, and to solution that was developed, um, by the Design Scape's pilots. This is, um, in the, in the, in cases where the idea, that was, was Design Scape's predominantly funded and, uh, in implementation of existing research and then uh, tested in a particular context. So somewhat, somewhat less closely linked to lift experience of people. And here we found that actually that was much greater, so much loose, like, much as by in, in the innovation, the much higher risk of the, of the innovation of being adopted because of the, like, Donald James, in my mind. And the third, and then which is quite interesting. Um, or such, of the large, um, bar, in the, in the, in the, in the, for member, um, a chat, where projects, this is the value of base and previous project, actual experience, so, um, bring in a number of exist, this was, where actually kind of the process of sharing knowledge was both, both had the effect of using, of seeing users as providers of information to improve the innovation. But also, then, 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 the users in turn, um, in being involved in the design process of innovation. By making the innovation, there were, and adapting it to the own need, and adapting some of the language, um, of the project changing. It's, and using it for, using it for the, on the, on the, on the, on the, on the process. So then, this, this point, we speak to that idea that, um, that is, that was of qualitative nature, um, of community building, what's happening, um, also we saw the, uh, in the, in the Design Scape's, from the pilots. Uh, and this link in some ways, uh, but in completely with, um, Ingrid's presentation. So, the last round, uh, in the last, so we're on, which covers everyone, three pilots, uh, who are successful pilots. Uh, in previous rounds. We did a paper, um, mattered, where the right hat, where the right, develop links with organizations, so that by Design Scape's. Uh, and it's interesting, that, of course, we're surprised, and, and Ingrid says that, um, that much it was much more likely, uh, that funded on the pilots, built links with other organizations, then non-funded on three and previous pilots. And I do think that is to a large extent part of, um, a successful result of the capacity building, which is back to Design Scape's. Put on and the quotes in the blue box, speak to some of those, like, I think the resources shared. So this idea that the master people, master building program was a form to learn from other projects, um, and supported integration for community. Um, and started to create a sense of synergy and working together through those different conversations that were, that, that were initiated with capacity building. Um, so that's, uh, so, so there was, I hope this is an interesting, that is an interesting observation, that's a program level, that kind of, but that intervention, that into the system in the form of capacity building, also had the effect of building projects. Um, a, a program that you'd like closer, closer to. Um, if you look at the pilot level, um, and kind of the, the results that, um, that, uh, so, so right pilots share with us. Um, it is quite interesting that the pattern is, um, a increase of the professional networks, by those that were funded by Design Scape's and certainly in round three. Um, uh, with the fund, uh, specifically significant difference between standard and non-funded pilots. There is an interesting there is an interesting outlier, which is round two. Or the, kind of self-proved data, so, as a test network, game, but the, the experiment work that we did comparing, um, funded, non-funded pilots, um, should have slightly more conservative picture. Um, and should not show any significant differences. And we think that's possibly, um, a result of, um, Design Scape's pilots have consolidated in the network as part of implementing, implementing. And the pilots rather, the project rather than sort of expanding and growing. The other side, so kind of the professional networks, kind of networking game on the one hand. Looking at, so finding new customers, um, also very, also very key trend. And perhaps not surprisingly, particularly pronounced in round three, but the task was to scale. So that, that scaling process reflected, uh, reflected in, in the number, where, um, to, 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 to protect, um, so that's, 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 in, in, right, identify, from the customers, and the non-pretty particular customers, uh, were situated outside of the locations, where can I, there was an expansion effect. Come, that's what I said here, all to, to the locations, where the and questions was held to. What is, what is, what is, what is, for example, of what these networking effect that look level could look like? Was it around tools, or type, in project, was implemented in, in, in and the diagram, and what is the capsule, the nature of the, of the network that was created and that was necessary in order to implement the pilot. It includes both public sector and private sector entities. And the kind of types of organizations, anything from public administrations to venture to venture capital and technology. One role, so that's, so that's one, that's one system diagram, that kind of shows for these, for these networks and for these communities look like. Looking at, looking at the end of the results, looking at the user level. So such two interesting trends. There is something about involving more users as a result of receiving funding from design scales. So and that's quite new and different between the rounds. So in round one, seven, seven percent responded to the service that had involved most of them. And there was, this is the difference between those who see the funding and the in round three, that was a focus on understanding user needs and innovation to different contexts. It was, it's five, you know, users in, when you, when you, this is in context, round two, again, it's an interesting one. This is round three, I'm going to say, as experimental work, so compared the effects of design scales, direct grant, we've had, and so far, it's, and so far. And here, again, that can, that links with, for instance, about the high level of skills that these successful pilots have. This is quite interesting. That, when we are successful, then, and that's part of our confidence of involving systems and so it's like students, people around to successful pilot conference is slightly decreased. After implementing the project, compared to as a person, for the activity, conference increases, like you said, mistakes, same. And we, we, I think that's very likely the result of, of two factors, what's kind of some of the learning from implementing, and so on, the dynamic structure, and just, okay, that's, this is, this is, this is needed, no, to
...... organizations in particular the public sector. Also the technical institutions that they continue to moment. I think that's the turn and when benefit of this aging in the next episode, the network of those teams that were founded. Yes, and that is just a little bit more kind of under 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 mechanics of that quality of relationship building and the value of design terms of bringing in bringing together different people, finding the innovation and understanding these needs. So far, initial final reflections or thoughts. I think certainly from the numbers point of view and of the core information we can cancel the has been a community building effect at pilot level and design. It's level as part of which interesting. It has an awesome effects book and the connection was in fact, it's connected with the last time so understand anything particularly looking around for any scaling and standing user needs and how to do the innovation to different contexts. And so role of capacity building as well as some thinking and the tools and methods that will be called people to use. Um, hard role play in in the question. And that was my helicopter view on some of the numbers.
Okay. Thanks Kirsten for these thoughts. I would like to stress despite the fact that you mentioned that already in your presentation, but this is an important aspect to be stressed. And I'm paraphrasing it. So my question is basically, how wrong or unjust am I going to be in paraphrasing what you said in this less scientific fashion? What we noted also from our own observatory as managers of this call for proposals, we were those receiving, for example, the reports, reading them, commenting them and checking the administrative and financial documentation in support. So we were handling like the the ugly part of this interaction with the winners of the pilots. Because it was less on contents and outputs and outcomes more on the way they were documenting their endeavors. Nevertheless, the impression that we got was very clearly the same that you mentioned in one slide, Kirsten, when you said that you have evidence that some projects kept on developing their own results even after the end of the funded period, let's say. We on the top of that had a further impression. And my question is whether it is to some extent demonstrated also in a more rigorous way according to your research and survey. We got the impression that the networks, the local networks, that the individual winners could and were to some extent forced to create because of the purposes of their projects having to do with design, co-design implications of stakeholders and so on and so forth. That infrastructure, that local infrastructure was also to some extent helpful in aggregating more financial support from the local level. It was like an extra benefit from co-design and stakeholder engagement measured in terms of a sort of exchange between the little money on average 15,000 euros per winner we could give to each of them. On top of this, the reputation coming from being a winner of a European call, even if a small call, technically speaking, it is named cascade funding because it comes as a derivative from the big European program it belongs to. But still it had some reputational impact. And this reputation was being spent locally by our winners in a way that in some cases managed to procure additional resources. What is your comment on what I said? Do you maybe between the lines have any feedback from some of the winners you interviewed or surveyed also in terms of this effect? And was there any difference also in this respect? For example, across countries or across situations, stages of the call? Any comment would be helpful for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Francesco. So frustratingly, because I'm a bad person, not a numbers person. I don't have the precise figures in my head, but I've got the trends in my head. So on the financial leverage, yes, we did pick up a proportion of funded pilots, certainly around two and one that were able to access additional funding in order to continue their work. And in parts that was the sounds very quite significant place from quite small, but in some cases I remember that was quite, there was actually quite substantial. So yes, so that is given after sense of actually that kind of initial investment. But the science case offered the winners of the call, which is same was what is in marketing for most teams. They have multi-facture me for some of the teams. It's certainly have an effect on being able to access further funding in order to continue the exploration and business. It's what very zusammen with kein verband. There was the investment. We've had what's all this, this was a mix of private or public sector. And then the distribution account comment on at the moment. Whether we've got data, I suspect my hypothesis will be it was it would be quite varied between local, regional, national and possibly European. Which look at that, we're sort of looking at that at the moment. We'll see whether there's a pattern in the mountain. I think overall the the numbers are too small to make a comparison between countries. So we haven't looked at that. That's the fake. Continuing and yes, on your point of continuing the continuing the work. A portion, a good proportion of funded pilots did continue as I said. Probably in the feasibility study, it was after in another number. People were more likely to abandon the idea. If they didn't get, if they didn't get designs, get funding. And those that, and those who funded, but interestingly, of course, some of those feasibility study, they found it came back to be funded in round three. So there was something about perhaps an idea being germinated or kind of being somehow alive. Even though it might have been what from actively. And what was, you had another question, do you have any thoughts?
No, it's okay. I think you you gave me an answer. Of course, we are still developing the final deliverables of our project. So we may also have some additional interactions, the two of us, Kirsten, to see whether there is any further evidence we can comment on. But now I think the time has come to involve Professor David Crombie from H Q U in Utret. I think now after the the three speakers of today, you, David, may have a clearer picture in front of you of what we are aiming at. The big challenge ahead of us being how not to waste all these experiences that we have tried to present today in terms of communities, networks, but also results of pilot projects. Some of them are showing a very good vitality and being presented by people who were like individuals at the beginning of the project. And now at least in part have the feeling of belonging to a broader community of like minded actors from very many countries of Europe, as I tried to demonstrate with my presentation in the beginning. And now we have this upcoming call from the E I T for the creation of a knowledge and innovation community for culture and creativity. Of course, we are not pretending to say that we would like to candidate ourselves to be the leaders of a proposal. In that sense, we are at the service of our stakeholders, especially the European Commission and therefore the E I T in becoming servant to this experience when it materializes after the call next year. But what are your what is your opinion? What are your the the most immediate things that came to your mind while listening to today's presentations? David, let us know. Thanks.
I have to unmute. Very important. Okay, Francesco, thank you very much and thank you everybody. I have followed the work of the designers case project, I think, for almost three years now. And I was terribly pleased with what was happening. And and what I saw even was very early results. I thought this was one of the most encouraging projects in terms of outcomes. And I was sort of confused as to why? Why were there outcomes that seemed to be? Let's say of wider significance and not just for for within the, so we said, the design sector, but within other sectors of the cultures and creative industries. But also, I think, in terms of notions around innovation and particularly for me, because I work at a school of the arts, notions around learning. And this is something, and having listened, if I can, I will try to summarize a little bit what you all said, but with a few comments and forgive me for saying anything very, very stupid, because I'm sure I will. I I think the fact that you have so many people applying to take part in your pilots is astonishing. It shows the demand. We have moved, I think, in a European context far, so far down the road of design driven innovation. But we've not yet left behind, I could say, some of the, some of the, 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 the concrete blocks that were attached to in terms of trying to introduce fast agile flexible approaches. We are somewhat held back, shall we say, by existing approaches and institutions, et cetera. I was struck by in in a, in a, in a local or a regional level, where a lot of this activity is taking place from what you've said clearly. But there are a lot of the translational layers are still quite underdeveloped. Now, this was something that various bits of research have pointed out is that as a sector, the the cognitive initiatives are not yet ready to fully fulfill their role as mediators. And I think that's partly a question of capacity within the sector. But it's definitely a question of capacity among and between the stakeholders. We all know this from from any different types of interventions that we've done. You will find different learnings, different layers, multiple multi-level problems, shall we say. I I felt when you were saying, yes, we, we, we kind of need an element of transversality. So I think we need transversal skills to be widely deployed and widely understood, not simply skills within any one discipline, but a lot of the transversal skills that frankly most people may or may not encounter during their working lives or may or may not use, but they're certainly never taught these skills. These skills are not in any curriculum or very rarely in any curriculum. And the other remark I made from you said Francesco was that the involvement of stakeholders is 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 wonderful. It's something, you know, I have a background in accessibility. And of course, everybody incorporated accessibility into everything, which meant that nobody incorporated accessibility into anything. So stakeholderism, I think the stakeholder part that's important here is that stakeholders' experience in the same way that Kirsten, you talked about the lived experience of users, that stakeholders experience different stakeholder roles. So it's a way for a way a little bit from sort of identifying stakeholders to basically encouraging stakeholders to understand different roles of different stakeholders, which is basically from conquer science on taking different perspectives. I thought that the peology's comments were absolutely fascinating. And to hear a little bit of the history of how we behave as human beings, well, as animals in terms of our need for collective creation and how this has changed over the years. And we have a strong adherence now to, you know, I P R of one country or another, this notion of the individual author. And we seem to have lost the notion of collective authorships, which I find really odd. It reminded me of the book called The Enigma of Reason. Actually, one of these transperbers, a linguist, we're talking about language as a social technology. The, the, you know, the reason we do, the reason we have reason, so our sense making capacities was developed and evolved to help us to explain ourselves to one another. In other words, it evolved to help us to live together, to coexist. So we have also all these ridiculous dichotomies between reason and emotion. This is really not relevant. Much more relevant, I think, here is this idea that we have to recapture some of these, these, these initiatives. And I thought the stories about the Greek theaters. The theater essentially evolving the the stage was at the end of a process where your non- enemies are brought into the heart of the city. So, you know, democracy is an empty stage. A formalization of the end stage of that procession, absolutely glorious. Can we, as the collect, as the creative industries, can we do the same in terms of innovation? And talking about innovation and innovation practices? I I think we can. And an example I would use is La Furo dels Maus in Barcelona, who are very famous, of course, as an opera theater company. They also have their own research institute. So an opera company with its own research institute. And what they do there is exactly what purely you're saying here. They bring together lots of different people in very different ways, question their perspectives. They co-create for a week, for two weeks, for two months. It can be individuals from the community. It can be different research teams from different disciplines forced to collaborate and co-create on this empty stage and forced to do the formal end stage of that procession, which is a performance. So working together, it's beyond, I would say, it's almost a little, the next phase, I would say, of 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 some of the approaches that we're familiar with. So there's huge potential there. It also occurred to me, and this is a comment I heard from oh, I've seen elsewhere, but Florian Schneider from 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 Trump time. But the terribly important is notion of collective intelligence and what that means and our relationship with technology. I mean, we tend to use. We're not very good at anticipating the digital or the technological changes that are that we're living within and what's coming next. And we still talk about digital. We're not talking about quantum, not really, which seems very odd, because that's practically here. But there's also this notion of artificial intelligence as as the Greek chorus itself, maybe that's what that is. So there's the Greek chorus behind this, it's whispering in our ears and telling us these eternal truths. Perhaps that's the technology that's in which we're immersed. But one thing is for sure, as I think we'll say, we need to define a new cognitive arena where the collective term can be contained and collective authorship can emerge. I thought the comments made about the social programming of us, of of human beings being problematic, absolutely massively. And we we need to really shift from thinking about designing technology to designing social technological systems. And for me, especially on the learning side, this is a massive shift that it has to happen. It's long overdue. There's really no excuse for us not doing it. It's quite a straightforward thing from a learning perspective. But it's a paradigmatic shift that we simply haven't made. We 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 are, we have a very, very narrow understanding and way of talking about technology and technological innovation. So I absolutely agree that the notion of distributed collective intelligence has massive opportunity. It's massively challenging. And that means that we have to give up a little bit of our own agency as human beings. But I don't think we have much choice in that. If we're to have some kind of collective authorship. I thought the ingredients comments about especially about the collective learning were extremely interesting and and how the building of communities and engagement. And it's great to hear so many places do so many different things. The people are so so keen to experience and and to participate in these activities. So I think the participatory part of this, which I would say the participatory arts are alive and kicking despite the the last year and a half, where we haven't been able to get together. And it's great to hear that the project has really focused on capacity building with with, and it's been instrumentalized. So you have a technical program, you have materials, you have a toolbox, you have a framework for analyzing capabilities and learning outcomes. And you have training modules, which are, which is really super. And I'm quite sure whilst the scalability is challenging, that these are exactly the kind of materials that others will use, others will pick up over the years. So that thought that was also very, very encouraging. I love the notion, and I, this is one of the reasons that I think designs keeps has been so well designed itself. I think it was in the green paper where you talk about capacity building as as a public sector competency. And this is something that I can tell you on a daily basis. We would just like that now, please. Thank you very much. We would really like it all our relationships with the state, whatever level, with your province, your province, your region, your city, your municipality. That we had a shared discourse already. So we don't. But I think the focus really towards the public sector itself as a set, a group of or a set of stakeholders that themselves require this kind of competence building, I think, is really fantastic. It's a great impulse and I'm sure it will be picked up at a European level because it's so absolutely necessary if we're to move forward. And I thought also Kirsten's remarks about the, again, this is a kind of discourse question about, you know, I I I remember when I first started working at a design school, a Dutch design school. And really, nobody could agree on what the word design meant. I'm sure they still don't agree on what the word means. So when you go into the wider world, it's not surprising that there's not a, not a single common understanding of what we're talking about. Myself, my favorite definition is design is what happens between the ears. That works for me. That's maybe not enough. But also, of course, you have a different, as Kirsten said, different understanding of of design thinking methodologies. And of course, in some cities, for example, you even have a chief design officer, but in most, absolutely not. And 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 no shared discourse around design thinking. And also some discussion that say perhaps it's a little bit underdeveloped in research that sets as well. But I think it's very encouraging to see the the bottom of ownership coming through. And the the users are very keen to become involved. And they consider themselves and are considered providers of lived experience, which of course is tremendously important. And if you can connect that to a trajectory where there is genuine ownership through cooperative practice, I think that's tremendously powerful model for change. Of course, as you all know, if the decisions have already been made, it will have the opposite effect and people will be completely frustrated by, you know, lots of involvement, lots of participation. And if they don't have the sense of agency, in other words, that that their involvement can achieve something, I've noticed people tend to drop out. So I think this, the the approach here is excellent. And again, if you combine that with capacity building and the design thinking side, perhaps fewer municipalities, perhaps municipalities will start to involve the lived experience of users far earlier in the process, which would be very useful, I find. I was also really encouraged to hear about the diff, the high level of skills that you, that were noticed, that were noted during the evaluation. And also the importance of context, which was, I think myself, is is a terribly important word that we 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 don't fully understand. So I think in general, the role of capacity building and of design thinking, the curse and highlighted that that's tremendous to see. So I think these are outcomes from the project that you've all been involved in, of which you can be enormously proud. And I have to say, which have, which have helped me to formulate a number of different initiatives which are relating to this. More on the learning side, I would say. I maybe show you one thing, which I can say, be married a little bit from from listening to you. Let me jump forward. Couple of slides here. This is sorry, jumping. This is a something that I wanted to mention, and it's not, I know some of you will know this, but it was quite new to me at the end of last year. But this is an O E C D initiative on the notion of anticipatory innovation. And this is where I find a huge overlap between or rather, two things. A huge overlap between the anticipatory arts and the idea of anticipatory innovation. I think the arts are by their very nature anticipatory. But and there's a huge demand to include the anticipatory arts, but we have systems that find it difficult to cope with it because the methodologies used tend to be a bit different. But this notion of anticipatory innovation, I think, is extremely useful. But it also requires participatory arts. And that the design sketch project has really looked at this. So I think if you can merge the anticipatory and the participatory arts, you have the a real contribution for anticipatory innovation. And particularly the 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 initiative on anticipatory innovation governance from the O E C D, which is largely for the public sector. What I found also very useful was the ability to contextualize different types of innovation. And so this, this diamond diagram, which explains, well, let's say, four types of innovation, some of which were familiar with mostly in itself is incredibly useful. You know, located, very often we find that people aren't aware of how these different types of innovation might or might not come together or might or might not be connecting. And, you know, if you're using the wrong tools or the wrong technologies or inappropriate ones, because you're not aware of the type of innovation in which you're engaged, that's, that's not helpful. So I think the the notion of anticipatory innovation governance and anticipatory innovation, I think, some of the outcomes from design skates project feed in perfectly to this work. And I hope that the the future work can be based on that. My apologies if I've misrepresented what you've been saying. I'm sure I have in several cases, but there's just some initial remarks there. So I would like to thank you all for what, for what I've found to be a very inspiring and and a really, really useful project. And we can't say that about every project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you to all our speakers. I think our time's up. Therefore, I think we should close this panel right now, but as I said in the beginning, our non-conference or unconference continues. You will have additional sessions open already tomorrow. So stay tuned on our Facebook website and the official website of the project. And you will learn more about the upcoming events. Thank you and have a wonderful day.